This meeting of the Hingham School Committee is called to order. It is 6:33 on October 27, 2025. This meeting is being held remotely or in person as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting other than Harvard Media? Please let me know. All right. Tonight I am joined by my colleagues Michelle Eyre, Ally Anderson, Perry Ni, Tim Miller-Demsey, Matt Cosman, and John Mooney. So tonight we will move on to our first item business, which is approval-
Recording in progress.
Which is approval of minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held October 6, 2025.
Hold on one second, Michelle. We got a little echo here.
All set.
All set.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6 school committee meeting.
I have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? All right, those are approved.
I will move to approve the minutes of the school committee facilities tour held on October 18, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you post?
Abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay. All right, those are approved. All right, moving on to item three, which is questions and comments. This is the portion of the meeting where we have set aside time to take questions and comments on items that are unrelated to the items on our agenda. If there's anyone in the audience or anyone online that has a question or comment, if so, please raise your hand now and I will recognize you. And if you could just hold on one, I will recognize you. One second, I just need to read a restatement. That's not that brief. Well, correct, it's not that brief, so hold on. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at this meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee, as established by Mass. General Laws. The responsibility of the school committee are, one, to select and to evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the school committee practice provides time for questions and comments from the public on new business items on the agenda. With that said, please, I have a view in mind coming up to the mic, so your name and address.
Yes, good evening. My name is John Buckley, and I live at 235 Lincoln Street here in Hingham, Massachusetts. At the beginning of August of this year, almost three months ago, I reached out to the superintendent's office in an effort to discuss a matter involving my child, who was a student in the Hingham Public School District. I submitted an email summarizing the matter and copied four other school officials on that email, including the Executive Director of Student Services. Since August, I have called numerous times and left numerous messages. I've followed up with additional emails, always C.C.ing administration staff members. I even came down to the superintendent's office three times to schedule a meeting with her or anyone on our staff. Each time I gave them my contact information and was told someone would get back to me. In almost three months, I have not heard back from anyone from the superintendent's office. Not a call, not a text, not an email, not a letter, nothing. Last month, I reached out to the Hingham School Committee and explained the situation and was told by the chairperson that my request would be sent at the appropriate channels, and I thank you for that, but I still heard nothing. I'm here tonight, standing before you incredibly frustrated. I don't understand why I haven't received any communication from the superintendent's office. I have been ignored and disrespected and made to feel irrelevant. Tonight, I ask the school committee, again, to please reach out to the superintendent's office and advocate for me in an effort to schedule a meeting. I'd also like to ask the school committee to formally investigate as to why the superintendent's office failed to contact me during this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your remarks. As I said, this is not a time for questions and comments for-
Right. Okay.
Unfortunately, it's time we cannot discuss because it's not on the agenda, but I do appreciate coming forth to comment time. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any questions or comments or anyone else online? No, I don't see anyone else. We will move on to item four, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jen. Over the weekend, we had some exciting news from the Hingham Crew Team. Wanted to congratulate the girls' crew team on the MSPRA championships and to the overall team for the combined title. This is the third year in a row that the crew team has taken that title, so congratulations to the crew team. Also wanted to update the community as to our recent efforts to become an ever more green community. So on Friday, October 17, HPS held a small groundbreaking ceremony in preparation for the upcoming pilot of three new electric buses. So many thanks to Executive Director of Business Ayesha Opong and Transportation Director Patrick Cunningham for their work on the electrification project, which will support carbon goals set forth by Hingham's Climate Action Plan and result in energy cost savings for the district. On a similar note, we're also pleased to share that as of Thursday, October 23, the new Foster School solar panels passed inspection and the system is now operational and generating power. This solar project similarly supports the town's net zero goals and results in energy cost savings for the district. On Saturday, October 18, I'd like to thank members of the school committee, Select Board Advisory Committee, and our newly formed School Building Committee, who participated in our annual capital tour of Hingham facilities. The tour highlighted facilities' needs such as the high school roof and HVAC system, roofs at South School and Plymouth River School, and the maintenance needs at the Hingham Depot. So I wanted to thank Facilities Director Matt Meehan for his very detailed outline of our capital and facilities' needs. And I also wanted to say that on Saturday, October 18, we also hosted a well-attended community open house to showcase the new Foster building. I wanted to thank Foster Principal Matt Shifely and Assistant Principal Jen Newell for their work in facilitating those community tours. Last Thursday, we hosted author Lisa Demore, who shared a really compelling presentation related to her recent book, The Emotional Lives of Teenagers. During her talk, Dr. Demore shared strategies for raising connected, capable, and compassionate adolescents and how to support students in navigating common challenges that come with adolescence, including anxiety, risky behavior, navigating friendships, and the pull of social media. So wanted to thank the Hingham Wellness Committee, in particular Vanessa Webb, for her work in organizing the presentation, and a thank you to the Town of Hingham for partnering with HPS in sponsoring this event. And finally, just wanted to give a shout out to our PTOs. Over the past several weeks, they have hosted a flurry of PTO-sponsored after-school and evening events, including the elementary fall festivities, all of the HMS class events, including the Grade 8 Bonfire, Grade 7 Halloween Party, and also thank them for their work in the HHS Homecoming. Continue to be grateful for our PTO volunteers and booster groups for volunteering their time and talent to organize and facilitate these community-building events.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to item number five, which is communications, communications received by the superintendent.
None.
And 5.2, student communications. We don't have any. 5.3, has anyone else received any other communications? Nope. All right. All right. Moving on to old business, 6.1, which is to finalize the FY '26 Superintendent Goals.
Great. And so I had presented my goals earlier this year, and we kind of iterated back and forth. Wanted to wait until Dr. Panarisi presented her student services outline to solidify the goals, and so the most current draft is in the folder for review.
Excellent. Is there anyone, I know we went through these a couple months ago, so is there anyone that has any more questions or comments since that time?
These haven't changed since the last time they were-
No, so we had said that we would wait to see if there was anything kind of specifically-
As we admitted, I didn't read this version very closely. The same as the old book.
Yeah, and so again, there is a goal set around special education and supporting Dr. Panarisi as she writes her action plans, so.
More or less a formality because we didn't officially approve it, so I wanted to just, I know we had a in-depth conversation about them last time, but we just wanted to formally approve them. So nobody else has any more questions or comments since that time. We can move on with a motion.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year '26 Superintendent Goals for Superintendent Katie Roberts.
Second. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? All right, they are approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. So we have 7.1, which is to receive a fall student assessment on the MCAS and Beginning of Year MTSS.
Great. And before we begin the presentation, I just wanted to thank Erica Pollard and the curriculum directors who are here this evening. I wanted to thank Mary Andrews, our ELA Director, David Jewett, our math director, Michelle Romano, our science director, and Andy Hoy, who is fairly new to the MCAS party. Social Studies was only recently added as a tested subject area. And each of these directors in turn would like to thank their teachers and specialists and so on who supported the review and analysis of the presentation. So the presentation will be in two parts, so our annual fall Beginning of the Year MTSS presentation, and so for that, we'll be doing a somewhat abbreviated version of that with the remaining data in the appendix. And then just wanted to share a couple of notes about our Spring 2025 MCAS. There were a few different plot twists this past year with regard to MCAS, as anyone who has read the Boston Globe will know. So as everyone is aware, last year, the voters of Massachusetts voted that MCAS would no longer be a graduation requirement. We did see a few ripple effects from that vote that Erica and the directors can share. Another recent Boston Globe article also noted the fact that some of the essays on MCAS are in fact graded using AI. There were some challenges with that this year, and so just wanted to, anyone listening in to the MCAS presentation and who has read those two Boston Globe articles, just wanted to shed that light and context as we dig into our data. So with that, I will turn it over to Erica, who will present the data, and our directors are here this evening to answer any questions.
First time I say welcome, it's nice to meet such an audience.
Yes, absolutely. It's been a while.
Bursting at the seams.
Yes, yes.
All right. So thank you, everyone, and thanks again to the directors who really are, they're the stars of this show, and I just get to talk about the great work that they've done. I'd like to start by talking a little bit about our multi-tiered system of support. Ayesha, if you want to go to the next slide. As we have taught you, these beginning slides will look very familiar because you have seen them several times at this point. MTSS, or the multi-tiered system of support, is how we proactively identify and address the strengths and needs of all of our students. So the sort of key points of MTSS are data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring, and evidence-based supports and strategies. And the data that we use comes from the tools that are described on the next slide. We're using Akadience as a reading diagnostic for students in grades K through 3, so that's just for English. And then iReady is used in grades 3 through 5 for our ELA and reading, and in grades K through 6 as a math diagnostic. So that's where we get our data from, and that data on the next slide helps to inform our instruction and also our interventions. So we want to have a research-based, universally-designed set of core instructional practices that are for all students, and that data helps us to identify which students would benefit from targeted interventions either at Tier 2 or Tier 3 that can provide opportunities either for enrichment or for additional support, depending on where kids fall with this data that we're going to talk about tonight. On our next slide, I've identified some focus areas for our MTSS work this year. This is the fourth full year of implementation of these restructured, I guess I could maybe not call them newly restructured, MTSS intervention protocols anymore, but we, in this coming year, want to continue to strengthen our interventions and data protocols. The elementary principals and reading specialists, math specialists, have done a really nice job of leading data meetings that really allow teachers to do some good analysis of the data. We're going to continue to further develop and articulate MTSS at the secondary level. We are piloting a new math program, Bridges in Mathematics, and will continue the work of elementary math coaching cycles with our math specialists that are related to the math workshop model. And finally, we will continue to work to align our social studies and science initiatives with the inter-reading scope and sequence for a more cohesive experience for students. And then the next data source that we're going to talk about is MCAS. As Katie mentioned, there have been some plot twists here, but I will do my best to interpret the results. All right, we're going to start with ELA. As I mentioned, Akadience is the tool that we use for early literacy screening, and it's broken down into a number of subtests that you can see on this screen and the following and on the following slide as well. We don't need to talk in great detail about what each subtest measures, but it is important to note the level of specificity of the data that teachers are getting. They are really getting targeted information about what students are struggling with, which really informs the support that they provide. So those are on, yes, on those two slides. And then, as Katie mentioned, I'm going to provide an overview of some sort of selected pieces of our Beginning of Year MTSS data, and there is additional data in the appendix if you'd like to look in more detail at every grade level. So this slide shows us Grade 1 Beginning of Year testing, and we can see that there are a significant number of students testing above benchmark, that's our students in blue, and at benchmark, which are students in green. For the students who are in the yellow or the red, those are the students that we have identified for support. And this initial screening at the beginning of the year also helps us to identify which students might benefit from enrichment or additional challenge. The next slide shows an overview of our iReady data for grades 3 through 5. As you can see, we have the majority of our students either at or above benchmark in the green or the yellow, and a relatively small number of students at each grade level in the red, and again, those are the students that we will identify for or have identified for additional support. Just to give you a sense of how much data teachers get from this testing, they get subtest data that gives a breakdown of skills so that teachers and interventionists can really focus their attention on the places where students are in need of support. So we can see that for Grade 5, we don't need to talk about phonological awareness. Kids are doing fine in that area, and that will lead us to focus our attention on vocabulary, comprehension of literature, and comprehension of informational text. All right. That takes us to MCAS. This slide shows last spring's MCAS scores from grades 3 through 8 altogether, and what we're looking at is the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding benchmarks. This is really excellent data. We have 76% of our students in grades 3 through 8 meeting or exceeding expectations in comparison to the state average, which is only 42%, and puts us first out of our 11 benchmark districts. There has been a lot of effort put into solidifying the MTSS practices in ELA and in reading over the past few years. Again, the reading specialists, along with Mary, have worked incredibly hard to put this system into place, and it's clear that those efforts have been worth it. On our next slide, we see Grade 5, and we can see that this cohort is once again first out of our 11 benchmark districts, with 81% of students meeting or exceeding expectations as compared to just 38% across the state. When we come to Grade 8, things get a little murkier. There are some more things in play here in 8th grade, and these scores are still very good. We have 76% of students meeting or exceeding expectations. We'll see sort of a trend as we talk, as we hit on 8th grade through English, math, science, and social studies, which are all tested in 8th grade. And I'd like to just point out that in 8th grade, students are generally a little bit less invested in this testing, a little less likely to try really hard in order to make their teacher happy. And I think that this is compounded by the fact that the end of 8th grade is just a flurry of tests. It is test after test after test, and I think that the amount of testing that they're undergoing has an impact on student scores. However, that is not to say that these scores are not good. 44% of students in the state score meeting or exceeding expectations on this exam. We have 76% of our 8th graders doing that. So these are really scores to be proud of, even if 8th grade is a little bit of a tricky time. All right, Grade 10 is maybe the most interesting. With the passage of the ballot question last fall, we know that the stakes of the 10th grade MCAS tests changed significantly. Because the test is no longer required for graduation from high school, the state saw in all of its, sort of across the state, a 6% drop in student scores, which I think can probably pretty safely be attributed to the fact that students know that the high stakes that were attached to this test are no longer there. We also saw a drop of exactly 6%, and we have a lot of reports from teachers of students finishing the test really quickly, probably not taking the time that was necessary to write particularly the essay portions of the test. Across the state, we're hearing reports that apparently a lot of students submitted blank essays or wrote about completely unrelated topics, which are all things that will get you a zero. So these test results, I think, are less reliable as a source of data about student achievement because the high stakes are gone and they don't have to care about this test anymore. I mean, they do, they should, but I don't know that they do as much. All right. So when we take a look at the longitudinal achievement here on the next slide, we can see that we have very consistent, excellent scores in English Language Arts in grades 3 through 8. I don't know that I can say much about them except that they are excellent. And on the next slide, we'll see that same statistic for Grade 8. Again, we can see that there's a significant change in those numbers for this year, significant decrease in the number of students exceeding expectations, and then a corresponding jump in the number of students meeting expectations and a rise in the number of students partially meeting expectations. So again, the attitude around this test was very different this year, and I think, you know, that is part of the story of this data. On the next slide, we'll see a comparison of our students without disabilities and our students with disabilities cohort. We see a higher percentage of students with disabilities in the partially meeting or not meeting expectations category. Christine and I have talked about this as we've been developing this presentation and talked about, we'd like to really dig into these 34 students that we see in our students with disabilities group and see if there are any trends that we can uncover that might lead us to adjust programming or instruction for any of those 34 kids. It is important to remember that this is only 34 students, so when we see that 9% of students are not meeting expectations, that's only three kids. Obviously, we want every student to be meeting or exceeding expectations, but I think that that context is helpful when we look at the big picture of this data. The benefit of the fact that it's a small number of students means that we can really look into the support that these students are receiving on an individual level in hopes that we can give them the support they need to be successful. The next slide shows a comparison that is similar but not exactly the same. This shows our non-high-needs students in comparison with our high-needs students. So high-needs students includes the 34 students with disabilities that we saw on the last slide, plus students who are designated as low-income, economically disadvantaged, English learners or former English learners, in addition to those 34 students with disabilities. It's a slightly wider net. We again are going to want to take a closer look at these students to see what we can do to help them be successful. The benefit of it being a relatively small group is that we can dig into that data and look at ways to support each kid. All right. On our next slide, we can see some takeaways for ELA as a whole. For Spring 2025, Hingham tied for third in the state for grades 3 through 8 meeting or exceeding expectations. This number has consistently gone up since 2022, and I think that this reflects the strength of this program in general, of these MTSS protocols, and also the successful implementation of the inter-reading program that we adopted a few years ago. I think it's interesting to look under the next bullet there at where we landed in the state, not just against our benchmark districts, and also to look at where our students with disabilities fell compared to all of the districts in the state. So for Grade 4, those students were fifth in state, and our students with disabilities were second in the state for that cohort, so that's a really promising number. Grade 5 was second overall, second in the state for students with disabilities. Grade 6, fourth overall, 11th for students with disabilities, and Grade 7, fourth in the state overall, and 10th in the state for students with disabilities. Our students outperformed the state on average on every test item at every grade level and ranked first, second, or third for all grades in the meeting or exceeding category. As I mentioned, we did see that 6% drop in the meeting or exceeding category for our 10th grade students, and this is going to present a challenge for us as to how we're going to convince high schoolers that they should still take this test seriously now that it no longer counts as their competency determination for high school graduation. Also wanted to note that Desi's in the process of developing some new test designs for MCAS in grades 3 through 8, so we'll have some new information to share the next time we do this presentation about how they've switched things up on us again. Do you want to do questions by section before I go on to math, or do we want to wait till the end? All right, I'm going to keep going then.
Keep going. All right. It's a long one, so we've got to keep it moving.
In math, I'm going to start again with our iReady math diagnostics. We can see that again, in all grade levels, the majority of our students are either green, which is above expectations for this moment in time, or yellow, which is really right on target for this moment in time. So green and yellow are students that we are not worried about at all, and our students in red are those students that we're going to be proactively providing additional support A closer look at Grade 1 shows again those subtests, that at those data team meetings, the math specialists are able to talk about- the math specialists are able to talk about specific students and their specific needs as they relate to these subtests, and they're also able to discuss how these I-ready assessment scores compare with what teachers are seeing in class to really get a full picture of student achievement on the individual level. In MCAS, on grades three through eight, we are fourth out of our benchmark towns with seventy percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations, which is also nineteenth in the state, which I think that statistic feels a little different. Nineteenth in the state is, feels pretty strong. We've got a very consistent performance over time with scores going up. There is a little dip in performance this year, but it is not, it's not indicative of a trend. It's just, you know, the variability of cohorts. In grade five, we are first out of our benchmark districts with eighty-one percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. This grade-five cohort in ELA and in math showed really strong performance, and we'll see really strong performance in science as well. And I'd like to note that these are the students who've had the most benefit from these MTSS protocols and from the interventionists at the elementary schools. In the fifth grade, our percent of special education students meeting or exceeding expectations is also first in the state for fifth grade. As I mentioned before, grade eight is always a little bit more challenging. Students are a little bit less motivated, and they have taken about a hundred tests in the last two months of school. One of the other things that we discussed when reviewing this data is that all of these tests come right after the big trip to DC, and that we have some teachers who report that kids feel a little bit checked out after the DC trip. So I think it's possible to look at the timing of that trip and see whether there's a better time to do that that's not going to impact student performance. As I mentioned a minute ago, in the last few years, we've been really focused on K through five, and this is the time when we're turning our focus to the middle school to really dial in on MTSS protocols there. We have some ideas of how to look at different approaches to interventions at the middle school, which require a little bit of creativity and may require some adjustments to our schedule. So our plan for this year is to look at other districts who are successful and see what we can take from them. We've seen from elementary that this MTSS system works, these interventions work. And so as we shift our attention to middle school, I am hopeful that we're going to see that same success repeated at the middle school years. All right, tenth grade. We did see last year a sort of surprising little dip with our tenth-grade scores, and so we really wanted to look at what we were going to see this year to see, you know, is it a blip, is it going to continue? And unfortunately, the elimination of MCAS makes it really hard to interpret those results. We did note, however, that a lot of the students whose improvement dipped this year were students with disabilities. So again, that tells us where we're going to need to put our energy in terms of improving student performance. It does tell us that general ed performance for students was about the same as it's been in previous years, so that, again, helps us to narrow in a little bit. I don't a hundred percent have an answer, but we're narrowing in on what we can do to support students in this case. At grade ten, well, so at the high school, we've also been using some Title I funds to bring in a math interventionist at the high school level and provide after-school algebra support. This year, we're going to look at the possibility of some individual tutoring with Title I funds so that we can really support those students who need help getting across that line with algebra and geometry. When we look at the distribution of grades three through eight, we see really consistent results over the last four years, with the majority of students, again, meeting or exceeding expectations. And similarly, in grade ten, similar to what we saw in English, we have reports of a lot of students just finishing this exam really fast in tenth grade. So I think that we can see the clear impact of the ballot question on these scores as well. And this is consistent with what schools are seeing across the state. Everyone is seeing that the ballot question, particularly in tenth grade, had a negative impact on student scores. All right. When we look at our students with disabilities, we see a higher percentage of students with disabilities who are partially meeting or not meeting expectations. And as I mentioned, one of my goals for this, for the next month or so, is to dig into these thirty-four kids and look at what are the similarities in their programs, what courses are they taking that are maybe different from some of our general ed students, and to see what we can do to provide appropriate support. Next slide shows our high-need students. Again, that's our same thirty-four students with disabilities plus economically disadvantaged English language learners and former English language learners. These are the students who primarily will benefit from those Title I interventions that we've been able to input. We've got great feedback on our Title I interventionist at the high school, and while it's still a little too soon to see what the impact of those interventions is going to be, I think we've gotten some positive initial feedback about the impact that those changes have had. We have lots of math takeaways. In spring twenty-twenty-five, Hingham was tied for twentieth in the state for grades three through eight in our percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations. That's thirteenth in the state when we only look at districts with more than four hundred total students, which I thought was an interesting way to break that down. If we eliminate the really, really tiny districts, it gives us a little bit more information about how we're performing about districts that are more similar to us. We have seen that number of students go from sixty-one percent to sixty-seven to seventy-one to seventy-two. This year, seventy percent means that we are really nearing those pre-pandemic percentages and showing great consistency over the last couple of years. And over this five-year time period, our grade three through eight special education students have been first or second every year among our benchmark districts. Our grade-level highlights, grade four, nineteenth in the state and ninth for special education. At grade five, we were fifth in the state and first for special education. In grade six, twenty-sixth in the state and twenty-second for special education. And in grade seven, twenty-fifth in the state and fourteenth for special education. Hingham Public Schools students outperformed the state on all but four test items at every grade level. That's pretty impressive. And on the next slide, we can see the breakdown of sort of how that will inform instruction and curriculum development moving forward. So because we're able to analyze which questions students don't do well on on these exams, we're able to adjust curriculum as necessary. So we say that if we see, for example, that students are not doing well on the number system and expressions and equations part of the exam, we're able to go back into our curriculum and say, are we really sure that we are covering this? Are we reviewing it enough? Do they need more review? This gives us really detailed information about what students need more work on. And thank you, Dave, for outlining all of these things. All right. That takes us to science. We are, when we look at grade five, our grade-five scores are really very impressive. They have been first among our benchmark districts in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and again this year. One of the things that sets us apart from other districts in this area is that we do have a field science specialist who works with fifth-grade students and provides a lot of support that helps them, I think, to be successful on this exam. When we look at grade eight, I've already mentioned the issue of test fatigue for these eighth-grade students. We have also looked a little bit at our curriculum here. We rolled out the new Open SiEd curriculum. The students in this grade-eight cohort were in grade six when we first started really rolling out Open SiEd in a more serious way. Open SiEd has not really yielded the results that we wanted, but other districts are seeing the same thing. They're, you know, that seems to be a trend. And it may, this may change when we see the adjustments to the exam that are going to be piloted in twenty-twenty-seven or are going to be rolled out in twenty-twenty-seven, not piloted. They were field testing this year a new performance assessment as part of the exam that I think should be better aligned with Open SiEd than the current exam is. But Desi hasn't released data from that field test, so we don't know yet whether our speculations are true. Another thing that may have impacted scores on this test are that that field test portion of the exam, students knew that it didn't count, but then there were more questions after the part that didn't count that did count, and I think there was some confusion among students about which parts of the exam were real and which parts of the exam were pilot. So this will be a work in progress as we work to adjust our use of Open SiEd to meet student needs and also as the MCAS sort of adjusts itself to Open SiEd. Not all of our benchmark tests, benchmark districts test in biology, which is what we use for our science MCAS. So there's not always a complete apples-to-apples comparison, but when we sort only for districts that are testing in biology, Hingham is thirteenth in the state out of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-eight districts that use MCAS biology, out of three-hundred-and-two total districts in Massachusetts. On the next slide, we can see very consistent, excellent performance in grade five. Again, that field science position really does provide additional support for fifth graders as they're preparing for this exam. And in grade eight, again, we see very consistent scores over time.
I have a question. What, why does it, how does a school district determine whether to use biology or physics? It just jumped out at me. It was kind of odd.
That's a great question. I'm happy to answer that as the former science director. So biology, historically, most districts have used biology. We do feel that it provides really great foundations for humans who have to make medical decisions, who have to make decisions about how they impact the environment and so on. So bio is one that we have used historically. A few districts, there was a movement in science a few years back called Physics First, and so certain districts followed that path, but biology is the more common exam, and so we have kind of doubled down on that over the years.
Yeah, it makes sense to me, too. I just, I know I hated physics.
Me, too.
Yep.
Okay. I forget where we were. Science, grade eight.
Yep.
Very consistent across the years. And then if we go to grade ten, we saw a little bit of improvement, actually, in our science scores this year, with more students succeeding and more students meeting. We have seen a little bit of an increase in our students who are not meeting expectations in the last couple of years, so that, I think, is worth a look at. We did make a change to curriculum at that point where we phased out the integrated science course, so I think we'll need to take a look at whether there's maybe a missing piece that some of those students still need to help them prepare for biology. All right. Again, a comparison of our students by disability status. We have a higher percentage of students not meeting or partially meeting in our students with disabilities cohort, but I do want to point out, because I don't want to just give bad news, that this is still significantly lower than the state average. The state average has twenty-three percent of students with disabilities partially meeting and forty-two percent not meeting, so I think that our smaller percentages are better news. Similar to what we saw with math and English when it comes to our high-need students, we, again, have higher percentages of students partially meeting or not meeting. I will say that historically, we have seen students pass this biology test, even if it sometimes took a few tries, and it'll be interesting to see how that data changes because we won't be seeing those retakes anymore. Students won't retake if they don't meet expectations, so it'll be interesting to keep an eye on those numbers in the next couple of years. Overall, the science results were relatively similar to our past few years. We showed improvement in grade five, a slight decline in grade eight, and an increase in scores in biology. Students continued to excel in grade five, grade eight, and high school biology, again, exceeding the state averages on every one of those. The MCAS in science is a little bit, or at least in elementary science and middle school science, is a little bit different from the other exams in that students are tested on information that is, that they're, that they learn over the course of three years. So grade-five science MCAS covers material that's taught in grades three through five, and grade eight is material covered in grades six through eight. And as we saw in math, because we can look at the individual test items that students didn't do well on, we can use that information to strengthen our instruction by focusing on those challenge areas. All right. Last, but certainly not least, civics, which I think has been on the table since I started teaching social studies twenty years ago. We were talking about it then, and then we talked about it for twenty more years, and now here it is.
Can verify that it is true.
It's been a long journey for civics MCAS. This one, you'll notice, looks a little bit different because we only have one year of data. This is only the first year that this was a real exam. Last year was a pilot. And there's some context for this that I think is really important. We made the decision to combine US history and civics in an eighth-grade course. If you look at the standards, all that is strictly required is civics, but we think that it's important that they also receive instruction in US history. It's important to the six-through-twelve sequence of social studies instruction, and I think personally that that US history provides a really important context for learning civics and helps students not only to understand the concepts, but also to understand why these things matter. We did not do a curriculum pilot in advance of this first exam like some districts did, and some of these schools that we're being compared to are only spending the whole year on civic standards, which we've made the choice not to do. If we go to the next slide, we can see that we have forty-seven percent of our students meeting expectations, ten percent exceeding, and forty partially meeting. Again, I think that in the context, in the bigger-picture context of those results and the picture of civics education, I think that those are scores to be proud of. When it comes to our students with disabilities, I will say again that this was the last exam of so many exams for the eighth grade. I think that it, that really had an impact on how well students did. We can see that our percentages of students with disabilities who are not meeting expectations is lower than the state average, which is what we like to see. Again, similarly, with our high-need students, we do see more students in this category who are in the partially meeting or not meeting categories, but again, this gives us the information that we need to really adjust instruction and provide supports for kids and make sure that they get what they need.
Next slide, please. Ayesha? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
That's it.
That was high-need students. And then I'm going to talk about civics takeaways.
Yes.
So as I mentioned, this is the first year of operational testing. Last year was a field test. This part, so this requirement is sort of two pieces. It's an end-of-course test and a performance task. Because, as I mentioned, we are blending civics standards with US history standards in sort of a hybrid course that goes above what the state requires in terms of our standards. We outperformed the state, and a particular strength was constructed response, which I think speaks to the fact that our students are spending a lot of time writing. They're doing in-depth research projects. They're doing in-depth research projects in eighth grade, which, again, goes beyond what's required. They outperformed the state in all three of the civics categories and all seven content topics. And again, we now know that apparently we need to focus a little more on the ancient Roman Republic and Supreme Court cases. We opted to test both sessions of the MCAS in a single day because they're two relatively short sessions. I would be interested to know, I mean, we don't have an apples-to-apples comparison because we don't have a test group, but it would be interesting to see, you know, whether that had an impact on student performance. I want to also point out that the civics course, the other part of the requirement, is that all students take part in an action research project, which if any of you were able to attend the civics day presentation for eighth grade last year, they did some really, really impressive work. I think that the teachers did a really nice job of navigating, you know, when you have students conduct this kind of research, you have to give them freedom. And sometimes that freedom includes like letting them make some mistakes and, and go in wrong directions. And they did a really nice job of finding that balance and helping kids to find their own voice in these action research projects.
How does the test look like for next year or this year with civics?
I believe it's the same.
It's the same. Same timing and everything at the, it'll be the end and everything.
The seventh and eighth days of testing. So they have, yeah, so they have a total of eight days of testing, so.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
All right. That takes us to the appendix, which I'm, it's many, many more slides, so I'm not going to go through them one by one, but does include the breakdown of every grade level, if you want to take a look at those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
You know I do. We just talked about this a little bit in the committee, and sort of one way that I like to frame this for the committee is looking at sort of differentiating between special education services and the MTSS services, where special education services are determined at an IEP meeting. And the IEP are legally required services. Those are not budget dependent. We are, we will give those services regardless, you know, that the team determines because they're legally required. The MTSS interventions that we have are done by the interventionists, which are not special educators, but are the people who are really digging down into these tests. And we know when Erica's talking about really getting the specific skills and this, that the tests are assessing and getting those specific interventions, the interventionists are the ones doing those. And I guess the open question that I have as we look at this data throughout this year, as we're, in the current year that we're in, is the second year in a row that we've had a reduction in the number of interventionists because they're budget dependent. I'm wondering, I'm sort of opening the question is, do we have the right number of interventionists to provide the services? Because in effect, we've had really good data, really good scores, really positive results while giving you fewer staff people to make those results with. Sort of, you know, I don't think we feel good about those reductions. So I guess I'm looking at the, the directors and to sort of have an ongoing conversation of, do we have the right number of interventionists for the results that we would like to have? And, and if we don't, I think we need to start building the argument and socializing the argument with the town that we need the money to be able to provide those.
Thank you.
I guess that's one way to frame these results.
Thank you for the question, Tim. So I just wanted to share one clarification, and that is that our MTSS staffing includes the general educators who do provide some of the interventions. It also includes our specialists, our reading specialists and math specialists, and then the interventionists as a specific role. So all of those people are working together for MTSS. And so Erica, in her presentation, showed, I think the triangle is, is the way to show. So when we reduce MTSS staffing, we are still able to meet the needs of all students in tier three and most of the students in tier, tier two, but the group sizes might be a little larger. So we make our adjustments based on the staffing that we have at any given time. But wanted to clarify, when students are in their MTSS time, it's all hands on deck. So the general educators, the specialists, and the very specific role of interventionists as well are all hands on deck during that time.
And I certainly didn't mean that as a critique. I meant it as an open question of, you know, where the school committee's not in the classrooms and is, you know, in, on that level involved, but we are involved with providing the people in terms of the budget. So I wanted to make sure that we're doing our job.
Absolutely. No, very much appreciate, appreciate the question. And I do think that the data at elementary shows what happens when schedules, structures, staffing, and curriculum are all aligned. And it took us many years to build all those pieces together. So really want to, you know, thank the reading and, and the math team for building out that elementary MTSS. And we're really now, again, seeing the fruit of that. Math is coming on board with the curriculum piece, with the, the bridges as well. But again, for ELA, we have the, the schedule, the system, the staffing, and the curriculum all really aligning and, and the scores to show it. So it shows that that investment very much paid off. And again, math, very similarly, has those, the schedule staffing, that system, and will be continuing to work on that curriculum. So, so your point about did the investment pay off? Absolutely.
Thank you for answering that question. Matt, did you have a question next?
Yeah, I have kind of like a smorgasbord of questions. This is mainly curiosity. Grade three, we use both iReady and Acadian, whatever it's called, Acadians, or why is that? Like, why do we do two different things for a, two different forms of test?
I will let Mary Andrews answer that, if you would like to come up to the mic.
The main reason I'm asking is I'm just conscious of all, I'm sure there's good reasons.
So much testing.
There's so much testing. And, you know, it seems like in grade three.
The Acadians tests are quick, like seven, eight minutes total, one-on-one with students. So that's, that's not, it's the iReady where things get a little bit more consuming of kids' time, for sure. But the Acadians one, we have always tested, so Acadians is formerly Dibbles Next, so we've always done that K through two district-wide, largely at three also, but always for the students who weren't meeting benchmark, always those students. We continued and we still continue at four and five for those selected students. With the implementation of the state's dyslexia guidelines, three years ago, we needed to prove that we were screening all third graders, even ones who had met benchmark at second. So we, we made sure, so they do get a double dip, which makes sense because that's also the place where you're bridging, you're really coming out of learning to read and reading, moving into reading to learn. So we need the, the data on where you are with comprehension vocabulary that iReady offers, too. But it was largely born out of the dyslexia guidelines.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Second question, do we look, this is kind of, I guess broadly, do we look year over year where we are not performing as well, like within, so for instance, like I'm looking at grade five, ELA, I think it's ELA, like 100%, where everyone's passing or has green in phonological awareness, but comprehension informational text is like half green and then yellow-red. Like, do we look back and say like, because some of it could just be, well, this particular year has different students that have different needs or capabilities. Do we look back and say like, wow, we've had this history of not doing as well in comprehension informational texts, for instance?
So feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. Yes. And we do see a lot of consistency, and part of the reason that we see more consistency in, in terms of like what are the areas of difficulty is because, I mean, I think for every kid ever, comprehension of informational text is always sort of the hardest. So there's, there are pretty predictable trends that are echoed, not just in our data, but in like all the data about reading, about the order in which particular skills are acquired. So the fact that we generally have students in the red for comprehensive informational text isn't super surprising because it is a difficult skill. But yes, so year over year, that does help inform where we spend our time.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I just add, Matt, that I would say that the data that is most helpful to analyze for trends over time is the end-of-year data. Beginning-of-year data, we're really using to meet students where they are. But in terms of if we were going to analyze a data point over time, the end-of-year is.
That makes sense. So that kind of actually leads into my next question. Can you just quickly remind me or tell me, so the iReady and the Acadians is, is useful to look overall at how we're doing, but also very much allows us to tailor how we're going to work with each individual student on their specific needs? Can you just talk about how MCAS compares to that? To like MCAS in third grade, are we look, do we use that? I know we have to do it, but like, do we use that to individually say this student needs help in this, in geometry circles? Or is that, is it more like overall, we know we need to do that because a good amount of our students aren't doing well there?
So MCAS is less useful in that way as a data source because there's such a long delay in, between testing and when we get those results, that it, you know, it's hard for us to then, you know, the school year's over by the time we get any MCAS information. And I would say that in a world where we didn't have access to these other diagnostic tests, we would probably lean on MCAS in that way. But because MTSS and the test that we use between Acadians and iReady give us that information so much more quickly, that is what we rely on more heavily.
That makes sense. And then follow-up to that is, are there instances, so in some ways, so we, I know we have to do MCAS and there's some level of importance to it that is being diminished somewhat.
Yes.
Are there instances that we say, especially now, or we're looking forward, would say, all right, we don't do well on geometry circles, I'm using the wrong terminology, but we don't think geometry circles is imp, this is like the worst worded. But we don't, we actually don't, we fundamentally don't, you know, we understand it's on the test, but like we don't believe it's, you know, in turn, order of importance, it's like the, you know, 75th most important concept as we think about what we as a district believe is important for students developing skills in math. And would we then say, okay, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna change, we're okay with the fact that we are probably not going to do as well on that, those testing areas because we fundamentally, like, do we, is that part of the dialogue? Maybe it's changing now that.
Well, it is with civics.
Yes. And so the target is changing on all of these tests, it feels like, all the time now. But that is, that was the thought process with civics, is, you know, yes, civics is important, but we believe that US history is also important, even though we're not requiring it. So we understand that the trade-off will be, our civic scores won't be as high as some of our benchmarks, but that's a value judgment that we've made about what we think is most important for our students.
I would add that Open Siad adoption, I think, falls in that category as well. So the state was transparent in very much encouraging districts to adopt it, even though it's a very inquiry-based program, that the inquiry-based assessment wouldn't be rolled out until later. And so we made the choice to be early adopters of Open Siad at the encouragement of the state, who understood that the actual aligned test wouldn't be rolled out for a few years. So we did make a conscious choice there, so.
That's the right answer.
Because you make a good point that this is, MCAS is one data point, right? Out of many data points that we collect.
Yeah, that is, that is, you know, whereas the other, you know, iReady is one data point, but you can use it tomorrow or wherever, right?
Right.
Whereas MCAS is, is lagging. Two other very quick questions, sorry. Maybe you answered this, but, so we, the 10th grade science actually increased.
Yeah.
So what's the hypothesis that, you know, given that the, you know, that's also a test that, you know, you would think.
It's taken by ninth graders.
Yeah.
Not 10th graders. And we have a, a science teacher, if it's okay. I'd like to welcome her up because the, the bio team really worked hard to align that curriculum, so.
I'm actually gonna.
One of our ninth graders, last year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jacqueline Boprey, in this context, science teacher. Um, oh. Jacqueline Boprey, science teacher at the high school. I think actually something different caused a lot of the success there. We normally had a project as the final exam. Last year, we switched to a test, and we worked on that project in the last couple of weeks of school. And we made a decision as a staff to try to do the final exam the days before the MCAS. And then we reviewed during class time. So they had their review for their final exam right before the MCAS. And we took a day or two to review what they got wrong and like problem areas right before they took the test. So that might be why they did a little better.
Final question. So the math with disability, math students with disabilities was significantly lower. Talked about some of the things we're going to work on. Did I understand correctly that at the, and that's, that's one of the few tools in 10th grade that we have to sort of look across the, the group? I think if I understood the takeaways when we're looking at, and maybe it's in the appendix, but like third grade, the younger grades were doing better. Is that an accurate statement in math with students with disabilities? It's like such a stark difference in math, I guess, you know, that there's a difference in all the subjects, but math seemed particularly different. How are we doing at the, I guess, long wind away? How are we doing at the younger ages?
I'll let Dave take this one.
So, yeah, three through eight, we were, we've been first, with the exception of 2023, in our, for our benchmark districts. We, interesting, last year, I remember specifically saying, we had put in curriculum, I'll talk about eighth, but I'll talk about 10th. We specifically put in curriculum in eighth grade. We were hoping it would take a couple of years to kind of get some, you know, traction. We had collapsed the level specifically to try and address those curriculum needs in eighth grade. We had a great year last year, and then we swung back again this year. And so now, now I'm sitting here going, as a cohort, as a curriculum, and hence, again, that sort of laundry list of items you had for us to, very specific items.
Geometry circles, right?
It's on, it's on the items. And your point is very specifically spot on in terms of where it falls in the curriculum and its importance. But, so it was a good point. But then also, I'm thrilled that Dr. Paneris is here. We have some work to do in 10th grade. You know, it's, it's interesting to look at that, especially having been here this whole time, and things haven't changed, but all of a sudden, last year, our scores went, you know, and I was like really concerned about that and was going, it's probably a cohort thing. I'm just kind of excited to see if they had gone back up. And obviously, we saw what happened. But the MCAS being canceled, you know, had a big impact. And I sat, sat outside of the classroom, all the classrooms that were having the MCAS, and there's just sort of the hall monitor. And as kids were coming out on day two, saying, hey, how'd it go? Oh, are you just taking a break? Oh, no, no, I'm done. And it was 15 minutes in. Oh, it was easy. I didn't, you know, there was a lot of that. Now, again, that doesn't answer your direct question, but to the bigger picture. But Dr. Paneris and I have already met once. We know, we've looked at some of the data. We know we have to kind of figure out what's going on here. Our special ed cohort for the last two years at 10th grade jumped from, two years previously, it was like 21, 24 kids, jumped to 38 and 34 kids. So we're dealing with a much bigger set of students, but that doesn't necessarily explain why the percentages shifted, right? So we have to, you know, as Erica said, we do have the ability to look individually at every single student, kind of discuss a plan and figure out what's going on there, whether it's a curriculum thing, cohort thing, how do we kind of address it going forward? But very much top of mind. Does that answer?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
I just have a, it's not necessarily directed, but so there are no consequences for students going in, doing 10 minutes on a, on a test, and then they get to leave. And that's for 10th graders applying to college.
Don't say that out loud.
They get a sting eye from me. That was about.
Like, what kind of consequences can there be? I mean, if effort should be a part of college, I don't know, everyone wants a recommendation for college, but.
I think, yeah, we'll, we'll continue to stress the importance of, you know, taking pride in your work. I will say.
And they get to play sports after.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll continue to stress taking pride in your, in your work and, you know, taking pride in your school and all that. And so I think we can do some messaging with regard to taking pride in you.
Michelle had a question next.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking that one, because this had popped into my head, too. I think it's also a bit of a civics lesson, right? Because this data is important to future students who are coming behind you. So that's where that becomes, you've been here, you've been through it, but we need the data to make good decisions as we move forward.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
There's also scholarships.
There are scholarships, yes.
Yes. The John and Abigail Adams scholarships are available for students who perform well on MCAS, and so that is also a hook, so.
And you also need to meet or exceed expectations on MCAS in ELA to qualify for the SEAL by literacy.
Okay. Do you have a question on that?
I did have a couple of other things. I noticed that just in a couple of districts.
I noticed that just in a couple of districts, like Medfield popped out in math. Duxbury, is there, like, where they had, our scores are great, but they had significant sort of increases. I think like Medfield from 2021 to now is up 14%. At grade three through eight, and then Duxbury, like year over year was up 4% where we were down. Is there, does Department of Ed bring people together and say, share practices?
We have actually interesting context for that. You can reveal it.
Duxbury was one of the first districts to roll out their competency determination last year. And they included MCAS.
This was before DESI came out with their fully fleshed out guidance, so.
They really couldn't do that. And so when their students took these tests last year, they thought they needed them to graduate.
Which is actually a really interesting data point. And the state did actually track number of minutes that student, not just the, not just the scores, but actually tracked the number of minutes that students were spending on the assessment and the number of minutes tanked. So because it's digital, it's easily tracked. And that was a metric that was shared.
Very interesting. And then I just had one question on the social studies, I mean, or the civics, sorry. I mean, our scores were significantly better. I mean, fair to say that the, better than, our scores were significantly better than the state. Fair to say that the districts that did even better than we did were probably doing the civics only curriculum? Okay. And I do think that is an important piece. I mean, I do appreciate that the value decision in this district has been to include US history in that. I think our civics engagement of our students is, I don't know, school committee and another district, but what it is in this district is, I mean, it's off the charts, right? The town meeting, the eighth grade civic stays. I mean, I think the civic engagement of students in this town is, you know, a testament to what they're learning here. So I'd hate to see us teaching to the test, right? When what we really want is to graduate good citizens.
Similar to the Open Sayad discussion about, we want to graduate good scientists. We don't want, you know, the, I think the problems with the, about how the Open Sayad scores reflects on the MCAS has more a problem with the MCAS, not a problem with the curriculum.
Carrie? Yeah. So just two points. One is, you know, I understand the wanting to say, oh, we're reduced, for students with disabilities to say, we're among the best in the state or we're in the top. I'm looking at the state results though, and there are so many students with disabilities in the state that are only partially or not meeting expectations. So I just, I'd be cautious with that, like, as we look at that. But I did appreciate the fact that it's a small number of students and the fact that you'll, you'll be able to work together and dig into what exactly is going on there so we can get more kids doing it. But it's just, it's something that the state results aren't great on their own. So saying we're better than some bad results, like, kind of worries me a little bit. The other thing is just kind of to piggyback off of Tim's point at the beginning too, is the town did invest in the MTSS and made a conscious decision to add all those positions back a few years ago. Data's here, like, it's fantastic to do it. And I just, I guess, it'll be, and this will be on us as a school committee, I think, but we're gonna need to make sure that we maintain it. And, you know, because as we make some hard budget decisions and we'd hate to see all this progress go backwards. So just something we should think about going into budget season.
And I want to be clear that I never want to justify student, students with disability scores or in any way make it feel like, oh, it's okay that they're not as good. Because it's always an area for improvement. You know, this, this data helps us to support students and we want to see those gaps close. We want to see them all be successful.
Yeah, thank you. No, that's my questions. We are almost at eight o'clock, so we're gonna move on to 7.2.
Thank you, this is great.
Thank you, everybody.
Now, we have an equally brief presentation from the middle school.
Yes.
I'm gonna hope it's briefer.
We're just gonna give the directors a second, a scurry from the room before I start.
No, don't stay. You don't have a serious-
They've agreed to maybe at 6:30 tomorrow morning for a recap of this point. All right, thank you very much. Derek Smith, principal of Hingham Middle School, happy to be here this evening to talk to you about the Hingham Middle School School Council School Improvement Plan and the progress we've made towards our goals so far. As a reminder that these goals were developed during the 23, 24 school year. And this is a plan that extends until the end of this year. So we are gonna continue to work on these goals for the remainder of this year. But I just want to give you an update as to what we've been doing and how things are going. I'd start obviously with our school's mission statement, which I won't bother to read to you, but it's important just to keep in mind what drives our goals. What do we anchor our goals to? And that's our school's mission, which is tied to the larger goals of the district, the strategic plan and related goals developed at the district level. Our school council members for the 24, 26 years, myself, Joanne Novak, who's a parent representative, who will be serving as co-chair this year, Stephanie Shula, who is a parent representative, Jessica Paston, who is our newest parent representative, Dawn Murray, who served as parent rep for two years already, so her term has ended. And for our teacher representation, we have Heather Sullivan, English teacher, grade eight, Tammy Keery, special educator, grade six. And our community representative is Megan McCusker. We receive additional support from assistant principals David Riordan and Allison Janowitz. And Carrie Lee is our school committee liaison. So just a quick recap of our goals for last year and this. First goal was to expand and strengthen the role and function of academic teams in order to better support student learning and social emotional well-being of our students that aligns with the strategic plan spokes one, two, and three. Goal two, HMS will expand existing socio-emotional programs and explore the possibility of the development of a therapeutic learning program at HMS that aligns with strategic plan spokes one, two, and three also. And the third goal, HMS will seek improved student attendance and reduce the level of chronic absenteeism from 9% to 7% with a focus on our students with disabilities and student subgroups aligning with strategic plan spoke three. So turning our attention first to goal one, which was to expand and strengthen the role and function of our academic teams. So for as long as I've been in Hingham, we've had academic teams for grade six and seven. And for those who might not be as familiar with the terminology, and I apologize because educators like to speak in jargon in terms that other people don't know. Our academic teams are, they're built around the core content areas in grade six, seven, and eight. Math, science, social studies, ELA teachers all share a cohort of students over the course of that academic year. The students, their grouping's mixed throughout the day. But let's say, for example, our, our team of the Romans in grade six, they share approximately 90 students across that team. So that's what I'm talking about when I refer to our academic teams. So as I was saying, we've always had those in grade six and seven, but they did not exist in grade eight while I have been at Hingham Middle School, both as assistant principal and principal. We felt that this was a great opportunity for us to expand that up into grade eight. And we'll talk about the reasoning behind that. And we were able to do that last year. So the action steps that we had set forth as what we were going to be doing for this, to, in order to achieve this goal, we'd establish those academic teams in grade eight, restructure the teaching assignments in order to attach special educators to each academic team, establish team leaders at all grade levels, create a master schedule that allows team meetings once per cycle and opportunities for special educators to join those meetings on a regular basis and develop some record-keeping tools and procedures to track student performance and interventions and progress. So we've marked all of these complete with a couple of caveats here. We did establish team leaders at all grade levels last year, but with the difficult decisions that we had to make, all things budget-related, that was an area that we felt was not as essential to maintain this year. They provided a great support and service to the academic teams and our students. But when you have to make difficult decisions, this is what happens. And we did eliminate the team leaders this year, but not the work that they do. So we're working together to make sure that we're still tracking student progress, you know, keeping an eye on where students need additional, both academic and social emotional support through the team structure. So we did establish three teams in grade eight. We connected the names of those teams to our civics and social studies curriculum in the eighth grade. So we have the executive eagles, that is Mrs. Dillon in science, Mr. Lockheim in social studies, Mr. Gill mathematics, Mrs. Sullivan in English, and Mr. Grimm, a special educator. I think it's important to note that each of our academic teams at all grade levels have a dedicated special educator to work with that team. We've worked in a number of different formats where special educators have been across teams, across grade levels. But we believe that this allows us to get the greatest level of support for the students. We have the legislative lions, that's Mrs. Cassidy in science, Mr. Florence in social studies, Mr. Galvin in mathematics, Ms. Benou in English, and Ms. Ehrlich Walsh is a special educator for that team. And the judicial jaguars, that's Mrs. Flaherty for science, Mr. McCulloch in social studies, Mr. Santopia in mathematics, Ms. Elinoff in English, and Ms. Troy is a special educator to that team. So those teams have, as I mentioned before, dedicated team meeting time once per cycle. The special educators are often working with students at that time, but we do work with them so that we can free them up from those instructional duties on an as-needed basis so they can collaborate with their team members as much as possible while still maintaining the support services for the students in their charge. So some of the benefits that we, we see for our students and teachers when we moved to this team structure for grade eight, it's a stronger sense of belonging and community, better academic and personal support for the students. When we have teachers who can communicate and collaborate once every four days about the students that they work with, we see better results for our kids. Improved relationships and social skills, easier transitions and organizational development, and increased student engagement. For our faculty, similarly, we see increased collaboration and professional support, better understanding of the students with whom they work, stronger communication with families, reduced feelings of isolation for the teachers, which might sound a little odd, but if you're a science teacher who teaches science in eighth grade and you don't have anyone to meet with on a regular basis, you can feel a little bit like you're on an island all by yourself. This gives you the opportunity to connect with other teachers on a regular basis to discuss what you're seeing in your classroom from kids, not just science-related, but student-related. You know, what are they experiencing as students in our school, not just as students in your classroom? Goal two, expanding the existing social emotional programs and explore the possibility of development of a therapeutic learning program at the middle school aligning with spokes one, two, and three. Reviewed and updated protocols and procedures related to the transition room as appropriate. We did that. We do that on a regular basis. And last year was one of the times that we felt necessary to take a look at what we were doing in order, in terms of students accessing the transition room and tracking their progress there. And for those who might not be familiar with the term, the transition room is a space within our school where students who are having a difficult time being in school for a variety of reasons can still come to school, access curriculum, receive support, and stay connected to the school. Reasons for going to the transition room can vary greatly. It could be students returning from an injury, concussion, and need that break in their day because of the rigor, or even the lighting in a typical classroom. Or it could be a student who has a difficult time coming to school on a regular basis for social emotional reasons. And this is a space in our school where they are able to still feel connected and we get them through the door, which is the most important thing for those students. So we reviewed those protocols and made sure that we were doing the things that we intended with that, with that space. We said that we would assess the relevance of second step lessons taught based on data collected from the SDQ and make any changes needed to reflect the needs of our students. We do code that as complete. However, I just want to point out, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, we are shifting from second step to piloting the Wayfinder program this year, which we feel really enthused about. We think that it's going to yield some really important insights into our student experience and allow us to provide more relevant support to individual students as well as the school community as a whole. And I'll be showing you some of the things that we can, we can look forward to seeing from the use of that program in just a moment. At the start of this plan, I should slow down, come on, I'm still back a slide. I know we want to get home, but still, I worked hard on this. We, when we began this plan, we had a focus on looking at our students who we were challenged in supporting in our school in the therapy, with, in terms of therapeutic learning. So we visited other schools in the area to look at what they were doing with, with the hope that we might develop a therapeutic learning program for the students in Hingham Middle School. Along the way, things changed and we pivoted that. And instead of focusing on a therapeutic learning program with our school, this year we are really pleased to be working with what we call behavior technologists, technicians, thank you. Behavior technicians to support students and maximize the amount of inclusion within our school and the school day. So if we had gone the route of a therapeutic learning program, what that often looks like is a space within our school where a cohort of students would be, that would be their home base for the bulk of the day. And they would receive much of their instruction and academics in that home base, going out of that therapeutic learning space to be included into things like our elective classes. This allows those students to be in the greater student population throughout the course of the day with in-the-moment support if they're experiencing any sort of challenges within the classroom. And the, what we've seen so far this school year has been very positive. We see the students who are supported in this manner doing quite well in our school. That's not to say that the therapeutic learning program model is off the table for us, but for right now, what we found has been very effective is the use of these RBTs to support our students and keep them as included as possible within our school. We are focusing on establishing a student leadership and advisory group as a forum to communicate the needs and concerns to school administrators. This we are looking at as in progress. So if anyone familiar with the middle school would know about the Ambassador Club, which has been around for many, many years, and it has always existed as a service club. There's been a shift in that and they have changed their title to a middle school student council. I think one of the most important things to note about this student council is that anyone who wants to be in it is. It is not based on elections. It is not based on students being selected by teachers. Students who want to participate in this group are welcome to do so. This body will then be used to help keep me apprised as to what the students see as areas of need within our school. So I will be meeting with that group throughout the course of the school year. They, they're a very active group. I feel of our newsletter on Friday. They had their first major event last week with their Pink Day, where they were able to raise funds for breast, supporting individuals with breast cancer. They raised about $1,700 over the course of one day. But apart, aside from, from just this being a wonderful group of kids, it, it allows them to feel a sense of ownership and leadership within our school. And I want them to feel that they have a voice with the administrators. So we'll be using, using that group to help inform the decision-making, if you will, of the school administrators. We continue to work with the Hingham Cares organization. We had our second annual Hingham Cares Day last year. It was, it was incredibly moving with presentations for students at all grade levels geared towards their specific needs. Grade six students were able to see a documentary about the dangers of vaping and hear from the producer and director of that documentary so that they are better educated about that, that very real danger in their lives. Our seventh grade students heard from a father and a state trooper about the dangers of opioid abuse. Father talked about his son's experience, who tragically lost his life to opioids. But, you know, hopefully our students can, can learn something from somebody else's tragedy. And our eighth graders heard from students in the SAD organization at Hingham High School. But most impactful, I think, were two students, adults at this point, who returned to Hingham Middle School to talk about their own struggles with substance abuse issues and how they came out on the other side. And how, you know, starting at a young age with their experimentation with drugs and alcohol, just the incredible negative impact it had on them. You could hear a pin drop in that auditorium as these, these two young ladies spoke to our kids. And the, the power of the message from somebody who they see as more relatable than, you know, a 53-year-old principal saying, don't do drugs. They, they really heard that message and took it to heart. Next slide, please. We want to talk just briefly about the Wayfinder program. Wayfinder is the SEL tool that we're gonna be using this school year. It focuses on- It focuses on the six core skills, purpose, self-awareness, adaptability, empathy, collaboration, and agency. We've experimented with a few lessons and activities from the Wayfinder Program with our kids in sixth grade. So far this year, we've had really good responses from the students with the lessons that we've taught. Next week, we will be administering our beginning-of-year assessment for all of our students, grades six through eight. And Ayesha, if you could advance that slide one. When the students have completed this 37-item questionnaire, we'll get results. Now, she's just too fast, I'm sorry. I played with one sample student, and so you don't really see any data here, but if you could look under Core Skills with the false, the fake results that I input here, this student's top skill was their sense of purpose, and their area for room of growth, room for growth is self-awareness. Now, if you could go forward. The student on their side will see suggested activities that they can access. Again, our students haven't seen this yet, they haven't played with this yet, but once they've completed this, they will be able to see these different activities that they could then explore on their own or be directed to explore by a teacher or faculty member. So this is what the student would see based on the results of their beginning-of-year assessment. And the next slide, please. This would be the educator's side of things. So if I am looking at the results of this beginning-of-year assessment, and I see a group of students who have a similar area for growth, these are activities that I can then push forward to our students, either in a classroom setting or a small group counseling session, if you will. And we can filter through these. If you can see up the top, the instructor can go through Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. For this example, we're looking at a Tier One Activity Library for sixth graders that is movement-based, focusing on self-awareness. And this is just the top two lines of activities that are available to our students and the educators who work with them. Next slide. The third and final goal that we're focused on this year is student attendance. So, you know, obviously, coming out of the pandemic, student attendance became a focal area for all districts, and we did see our middle school students not attending to the rate that we had hoped that they would. And we walked that fine line about encouraging students to come to school every single day, but also staying home when you're sick and making sure that you're making healthy choices for yourself. But we do believe that chronic absenteeism is something that we should focus on and support our students around. So our goal was to improve student attendance with, and reduce the level of chronic absenteeism from the 9% that we were at at the start of this plan to a goal of 7%, and keeping an eye on our students with disabilities and other student subgroups, aligning with the strategic plan Spoke Three. So the first thing we did was we updated the language in the handbook to better communicate the importance of school attendance and consequences for chronic absenteeism, which we brought forward to this committee a couple of years ago, and did a little bit of tweaking at the end of last school year. We talked about developing incentive programs to reward students and teams for good or improved attendance throughout the school year. This is ongoing in a way. Now, the research that we looked at outside of the school council suggests that these types of incentive programs can have the reverse effect. So you reward a student for perfect attendance for the month of October, and the next thing you know, in November, they realize, "I don't have to come to school every single day." So that we've, you see a backslide in terms of student adherence to attendance of school on a regular basis. Also, we do not want to encourage schools to come to, students to come to school when they're not feeling well. You know, we want them to take care of themselves, we want them to take care of each other in their school community, and if they're not feeling good, should stay home. So with the focus on chronic absenteeism, we can kind of eliminate that pool of students who, you know, have good attendance but not perfect attendance. We have used other mechanisms to reward our students who are improving their attendance. We talked earlier about the academic teams at every grade level. We do Team Member of the Month recognition ceremonies each month, and one of the things that teachers and teams can celebrate for students is improved attendance. So really, anything is on the table, but if we have a student who has been struggling to come to school, and we see that they've made great improvements over the course of a month, we want to seize that opportunity and not say, "Well, it wasn't perfect attendance, it's better attendance," right? So we want to be able to praise them for what they've done. So we don't tie all of our celebrations and awards to only attendance, but we do use it as a data point when looking at ways that we can recognize students' hard work. For some students, coming to school every day is a challenge. It's hard, and we recognize that, and we want to make sure that we're being understanding and supportive of whatever it is that is preventing them from coming to school. We wanted to analyze student attendance data on an ongoing basis in order to identify and remediate patterns of problematic attendance. We have been doing that and continue to do so. We notify and meet with caregivers of students who miss more than 10% of in-session days each month and term. We just had our first round of those notifications coming up at the end of this month, and we include regular reminders regarding the importance of student attendance in our HMS Connection. We do that on a regular basis. And if we could just talk a little bit about chronic absenteeism. So at the start of this two-year plan, we were looking at absenteeism rate, chronic absenteeism rate of 9% for the middle school as a whole. At the end of last year, Ayesha, if you could click again, you can see that we dropped below 7%, which was great. That was our goal. We hope to maintain that to the end of this plan so that we can say at the end of this two-year plan, we achieved that goal. You know, there can be any number of factors that we could attribute this improvement to, whether it be improved communication, clarity of the expectations of the school, but I believe that it's more our direct work with individuals and families around what is preventing our students from getting to school. Our chronically absent students aren't absent only because they just don't feel like coming to school, there's almost always a larger issue. So we're working to make sure that families are getting the support that they need to get their students through the door. I mentioned the transition room earlier. That is a great way for students to just get in the school. If we can get students through the door, we can move them towards greater integration into the school as a whole, getting them back into their classes on a regular basis, while also listening and hearing what it is that's preventing them from being in school on a regular basis. If you could advance to the next slide, please, Ayesha. We did say that we would look at our students with IEPs. So significantly greater percentage of our students on IEPs are chronically absent. At the start of this plan, it was 19.4%. At this point, the end of last year, that had dropped to 16.4. But we do see still a significant difference between the chronic absenteeism of the school population as a whole and our students with disabilities. We want to really dig into that, not just this year, but every year going forward, to figure out what it is that prevents our students from coming to school. I think that the real obvious answer is a student who has a disability can find school to be more challenging than their peers without. And I think that it is fair to say that most of us don't like to do what's difficult for us if we can avoid it. So we want to figure out how we can best support these students and get them through the door on a more regular basis. Again, you know, these numbers are based on smaller cohorts, as we talked about before, but still, very important that we address the individual students and figure out what it is that's preventing them from coming to school. The best way that we can do that are those administrative meetings with parents and students when we, when we recognize that there has been a pattern of school avoidance Just a couple of interesting graphics here that I thought I would share, and this is the entire school population, because, well, when we talk about attendance at the middle school level, much of student attendance is driven by parental decisions, and you can see some of these dips in both of these graphs. And that low point in the top graph, 87.7%, that would be the week where our attendance was lowest, that's the week of Thanksgiving. So families choose to extend holidays, which impacts our attendance rate negatively. All of those dips in the first graph and second are either right before or right after school vacations or long weekends. So as much as we can appeal to parents to come to school when school is in session, I know airfare is significantly cheaper the week before and the week after, but schools, schools in session, we'd love for you to be there. And I think that it's important to note that our weekly attendance is impacted similarly. Students are, our greatest absenteeism rates are on Fridays. Fridays are typically days where families might extend a weekend, attend a sports tournament, find other things to do other than be at Hangham Middle School. So again, we're there, we'd love for you to join us on Fridays as well as Mondays through Thursdays. If you could just...
It's not a hybrid model.
Last day of school, everyone says, 100%?
Yeah, it's pretty good, right? We should tell them it's the last day every day. Actually, Ayesha, if you could back up for just a moment. I think, you know, this data is important to note. It's important to look at this in terms of the other things that were talked about this evening. Our greatest absenteeism rate is in Grade Eight. Our lowest MCAS performance is in Grade Eight. Students who come to school on a regular basis perform better on standardized tests. So we know that they're...
Bring it all together.
Right? See, this, this school improvement plan is ticking all the boxes. So if you could just jump forward now to some takeaways and next steps. So obviously, as I just said, Mondays and Fridays, days of greatest absences. Attendance is impacted by vacation and holiday weekends. Grade Eight has had the greatest number of chronically absent students each year. 42% in '23, '24, 40% of chronically absent students are in Grade Eight, were in Grade Eight last year. 40% based on the number of days that we've attended so far this year are in Grade Eight. So again, we want to message to our Grade Eight students that you are still middle schoolers and you should come to school every single day, and when you come to school, you should do all of the work and participate in all of the assessments to the best of your ability. So we've seen improvements, but we do want to continue to focus on our students with disabilities who do miss more school than their peers without disabilities, and see if we can't remove some of the roadblocks that they can identify for us to get them through the door on a, on a regular basis. And our building administrators and school counseling staff have and will continue to participate in trainings and professional development programs centered on school avoidance and attendance issues. As we move forward with our school council, I do think that, as Erica referenced before, we're going to be looking at how do we strengthen and enhance our MTSS programming at the middle school? How does that look in terms of our school's master schedule and what we're able to offer students over the course of the school day? But that's all the stuff to come. This is all the stuff that we've been doing, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on any of those goals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
That was a great presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, and I assume I'll be back here in the springtime to talk about how wonderfully we did wrapping these goals up and to share our next goals with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve Year Two of the 2024-2026 Hangham Middle School School Improvement Plan.
Hold on a second. All those in here?
Hi.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go catch up with the directors and give this credit.
Yes. Absolutely. Does anyone have any objections on the committee to move Item 7.7 up?
No.
So we, go ahead and let Jackie get out of here. So we will do Item 7.7, which is to discuss integrated preschool and Kids in Action KIA fees for FY '27.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No problem.
So I'm here tonight to ask for your, well, I'm here recommending the fees for the '26, '27 school year. We have asked for a 6% increase in the half-day integrated program from last year. We are lower than the community preschools in the program for the three hours a day. Their average cost is $7,625, and we're proposing $6,912 for this coming year. We've asked for an 8% increase in the integrated program and also the Kids in Action preschool and pre-K programs. The communities average about $15,000, and we'll be averaging around $12,000. We're trying to stay competitive with the local communities and still offer wonderful programs, but also let families know that we're affordable. The, we have asked for an 8% increase also in the preschool and pre-K extended-day programs. The average cost for this local community schools are about $21,000 a year for extended day, which is before and after school, or also for an 11-hour day program. And for the Kids in Action and Integrated Preschool and Extended Day programs, we will ask for about, we will ask for tuition to be about $19,000. We're also asking for a 5% increase on before and after-school program for children in Grades K through five. The community programs for six hours a day average $8,600, and we will be averaging approximately That's all I had.
Yep. That's great. I really appreciate how you've broken it down into multiple schools with a variety of different hours, and I think you have like seven or eight different benchmarks here. And I, because I'm a geek, and I went back and looked at, because this is your past practice, you've done this, when you've done increases, I went back and looked at the benchmarks that you've had previous years, and they've also gone up significantly over the past few years as well, around the same percentage as well. So for me, that kind of justifies it just as much, that to see as everyone else is going up with their rates as much.
Just a reminder that Kids in Action particularly is a program that pays for its own health insurance, and this year we've had a little bit of increase in costs in terms of introducing behavioral technicians and behavioral specialists within the program as well, too. So we have seen some increases in costs during this year, and just wanted to mention maybe with that as well, that health insurance is always going up every year as well.
That's the 11 and a half hour date, when you're talking about, Ayesha? Well, I guess that's all of them, but that...
All of them.
All of them. Does anyone in the committee have any questions for Jack?
I just have a comment. It's a great program. My son Patrick loves it. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And I don't know if I should really vote on this, since he'll definitely be in next year. You'll abstain, but please vote for this increase.
You're allowed to vote if it costs you more.
It's fine. You don't want any view of me being...
Thank you, I appreciate that, Eric.
If there's no more questions or comments, then I just make sure that it's still in the public. Nope, no one should give us the one of the public. I will...
She gave us the motion.
And John, if you want to abstain, that's perfectly fine.
I will abstain, but you know where my feelings are.
That's totally your choice. I mean, we, I vote on increasing athletic fees, and I pay for them, so. Yeah, I mean, if you want to vote for it, then that's your choice.
Excuse me, please. One other thing, Sarah Chik, who's the new integrated preschool director, is also on the call.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Let's make one of the batches here.
Welcome, Sarah.
Wonderful addition to the team as well.
Absolutely.
Welcome, Sarah, and thank you for hanging on for this meeting until the late hours of the night. All right, so with that, I will take a motion.
All right, I will move to approve the integrated and Kids in Action preschool fees and the K through five Kids in Action fees for before and after school for the 2026-2027 school year.
Second? All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. And just to clarify, this is for next school year. It's not an increase for the current year. Just for anybody who's listening and is worried.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Erica.
All right. We will move back to item seven point three, which is to discuss the principal search timeline.
I will let Erica take this one, where Erica is going to be leading that search.
Yeah.
Leading. Mm-hmm. Not lea-, no, definitely not leaving. Very important distinction. Thank you.
Window for retirement is.
No, yeah.
I think I still have a minute before I'm-
Maybe she's throwing her hat in the wind.
I'm not certified as an health officer. So given that Mr. Scheifli has announced his retirement as principal of foster school, we of course need to begin our search for a new principal. We're going to begin in November with some profile development. So within the next probably week or so, I'll be sending out information about focus groups for staff, students, and community members, as well as a couple of surveys that will help us to develop a profile of the ideal principal for foster school. We will then begin advertising for members of the committee and forming a hiring committee for this role, which will be oriented and trained. And we will review the resumes in January, conducting interviews in late January, early February, with the hope of identifying some finalists by February sixth. After which point, we will conduct reference checks and schedule finalist interviews. The finalists will come here to do interviews, and we hope that we will have our final appointment made in March 2026 with the position to officially begin, I believe, on July first. Yes?
Yes, with a significant overlap to the extent possible.
Yes, so that we can benefit from Mr. Scheifli's wisdom as he eases his way into retirement.
And did just want to take a moment to really thank Principal Scheifli for his service. He was so instrumental in getting that beautiful new foster building open. I've said before, we're so grateful. We have someone with military ops experience that was able to masterfully manage all of those logistics, and he will be concluding thirty-one years in education of service to students. So very grateful for his time here, and we are going to have a victory lap for him this year, so he can really enjoy one hundred percent being focused on principal and not also juggling a move and a building project. And we are optimistic about securing a really fantastic candidate for foster and know that Principal Scheifli will do everything he can to smooth that transition, to have overlap with that individual. And so Principal Scheifli will be retiring on his birthday on August first, so he will be here in the summer months to help with that transition. So, and also wanted to note that we had previously shared with the committee last April our anticipated timeline for the search for the permanent principal of Hingham High School. So Erica and Mary Ann Foley will be leading both searches, so they will be busy. And to clarify again, the committee that will form, will do the screening process, but everything beyond that will be a very public process. Lots of opportunities for community engagement and appreciate and advance everyone's engagement in the process, so.
Well, we certainly congratulate Mr. Scheifli on his thirty-one years of service to education. I sure hope he will enjoy his victory lap this year. So for the committee, if anyone wants to email me, anyone who's interested in serving on the foster or the high school, just email me your interest, and then we'll go from there.
Can I ask you a question? Just because it seems to be our sort of recent past practice, I was just wondering if you could talk through the decision to have the search and hiring this year as opposed to going the interim route? I think it's a good decision. I'm not questioning it.
Absolutely. So in the past, we have gone with an interim approach when it has been late in the year. We're so grateful that Principal Scheifli gave us early enough notice that we can be very competitive throughout the hiring process. So the fact that we will have our candidate profile developed and have this position posted well before the winter break means that we'll be able to attract a wide variety of candidates. In the past, for example, the high school principal search, that news was announced so late in the year that it was considered late to be trying to hire a permanent principal at that time. Very grateful that we had a very qualified candidate in Dr. Bucky, and he has done a terrific job in the interim role. But in terms of posting for the permanent position, because we can start early in the year for that foster role, given that Principal Scheifli gave us so much notice, we're very optimistic about being able to secure a strong candidate for that position. So thanks for the question.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to seven point four, which is to discuss candidates for chair and vice chair of the 2025 School Building Committee.
Sure. Is she, do you want to take that one? We need a microphone, so.
I think we're loud enough, no?
Thank you so much.
Got enough talking.
Kind of give it to Matt.
So in terms of the finance committee, the finance and capital committee met last Friday morning very early, and we reviewed and interviewed two applicants for the position of chair and vice chair. And those applicants, from looking at their resumes, we noticed that they were very, very breadth of experience in terms of either being on a board before or even being involved in other activities in terms of building, the vice chair as an example, was involved in building the dock at the high school. And those two people, we have, and we ask if you, the whole committee will vote on to approve the decision or the suggestions of the finance committee, Angela Thadinja as chair and Jim or James Cahill as vice chair. Both people come with a wide breadth of experience in terms of being on other committees, and even as we interviewed them, we were very excited about the prospect of them joining as being chair and vice chair as well.
So any questions?
No, just make a comment that some of us went on the facilities tour, and I was very impressed with the candidates for the, for this 2025 Building Committee. And I wish them less than nine-year standing committee, like the 2017 School Building Committee. That is ill. I think it's going to end up being a nine-plus-year one. But that's all I have. Do you want a motion? Do we need a motion?
Yes, I need a motion.
Okay. I will move to elect a point. Angela Thadinja as chair of the new School Building Committee and James Cahill as vice chair of the new School Building Committee.
Hold a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, moving on to seven point five, which is to receive an enrollment update.
Thank you. So this is our second enrollment update of the year. Earlier this year, I gave a kind of a preliminary enrollment.
Can I just, did you want to be recorded?
Yes. I voted no.
Okay. Sorry. Forgot that little procedural. Continue.
Thank you. And so presenting tonight are our October first enrollment data, which is an important set of data, because that is the data that we submit to DUCI each year. And so the October first is what we use when we're comparing year-over-year data. October first is the data. So one of the things I wanted to note about this data is it very much plays out the predictions of the NESDEC enrollment study that we had done, which predicted stable to increasing enrollment for elementary and middle school, which has been borne out and a continued downward trend at HHS. And so do think that, we're very grateful that that NESDEC data is playing out. It's helping us to better project our elementary and middle school enrollment, and we will continue to monitor trends at Hingham High School, so. And we'll also note for members of the public who are viewing this data for the first time, as we present enrollment throughout the year, there are a number of factors that will cause changes in this data. So families do move in and out of town throughout the year. We do have movement of students in and out of district. One important dataset that will change throughout the year is our preschool numbers. So students age into that program as they turn three. So we will continue to see those pre-K numbers climb. And I will also note that our Kids in Action preschool students are not included in this count for the purposes of DUCI reporting.
Just one question. On the out-of-district numbers, I was just looking at the budget presentation from last February, and there were fifty-six students out of district. And then it was, I think, forty-eight at the beginning of the year, and now it's forty-two. That's a pretty big decline, especially when the number of kids on IEPs has gone up. And I know you can't talk about individual students or anything like that, but generally, is there a reason? Like, is there a trend? Are people coming back? Or are they graduating or?
I can share some trends, and Dr. Pennerisi is welcome to contribute as well. But we did see a number of students age out and graduate. But I will also speak to the success of the pilot that we initiated for the first time last year of hiring registered behavior techs or behavior technicians. That has been a really successful pilot and one we continue to analyze and expand on. But for students with behavioral needs, that behavior technician is a tool we hadn't previously employed and had not had in our toolbox. And those behavior technicians work very closely with our BCBA's, who previously had been stretched very thin and did not have the bandwidth to serve the number of students that really needed that service. And so the behavior technicians have been a terrific addition to our toolbox. It's not the be-all and end-all, but has been another tool in the toolbox. And so I do think that is one contributing factor. But we did, in addition, have some anticipated age outs and some anticipated graduations as students completed their high school diploma. So, Dr. Pennerisi, did you have anything to add to that?
The number, that number doesn't really align with my roster of individual students, so I'm wondering if those are the students that are placed in actual out-of-district schools or those are the students that are awaiting placement.
I think it also excludes some of the kids who, depending on, some of the programs, out-of-district programs may not be DUCI-approved programs either. So I think in that case, too, the last numbers that we had were all out-of-district placements. Some of those here are just the DUCI-approved placements and not every single placement that we have within the district.
So if a student's on an IEP and placed in a non-DUCI-approved school, wouldn't they be, shouldn't they be included in that number?
So for DUCI-reporting, it may not be recorded as an out-of-district placement in some cases, so that's, that may be a difference that we're seeing in terms of the total numbers versus the DUCI-approved ones.
But they were in, they weren't-
For our purposes, we should agree on what, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm saying in terms of the numbers last year, the fifty-six included everybody, right?
Right.
But I think in terms of, because a lot of this here may be looking at just the DUCI-approved ones, that has to be, may have to be reported. And Dr. Pennerisi can correct me in terms of whether the non-DUCI-approved ones may not always be categorized exactly the same. That might be part of the difference as well.
Well, in June, on our June numbers, it was forty-eight.
Yep.
And last October, it was forty-eight.
February is fifty-six, at least according to the budget presentation.
Yes, so the numbers did climb over the course of the year as additional students went out of district. And so again, that out-of-district number is one that does change over time. Students go in and out of district at varying points in the year. And so I do think that Dr. Pennerisi and I will take yet another look at the data, but this is the data that we had as of October first.
Yeah, thank you. I know that, I know the numbers do fluctuate. There's just a steady decline. I was kind of like, oh, what's going on? I mean, that's great with about the RBTs and, you know, the way that kids have been able to integrate, too. I think that's fantastic.
Yes, and so again, that pilot thus far has been last year exclusively at the elementary level. This year, we've drawn that up to middle school and high school as well. And so we'll continue to track that pilot, and we'll hope that it will continue to support students in the least restrictive environment. And that's what I appreciate about this pilot, is it is serving students in the least restrictive environment.
Definitely. And just one other thing, when you are reporting the numbers to us, I would prefer, if you could, if there were students that are non-DUCI-approved schools that are on IEPs, like, that we're supporting, like, I would like them to be in here somewhere, even if they're not, like, reporting to DUCI, just so we have an idea of where kids are going.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Also, and to have it be the same practice in the budget documents as well.
Yeah.
And I think that they have.
Yes, they have been over time.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
And I did want to thank Ayesha, where Shari has been out, Ayesha was very instrumental in helping to gather this data for us, so do appreciate that.
Does anyone else have any questions? No. All right.
So it's, and it's actually fifty-one when you include the non-OSD schools. It's actually fifty-one out-of-district tuitions.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Moving on to seven point six, which is to receive a hiring update.
Thank you, and thank you to Mary Ann Foley, our HR director, for providing this update. And so even though we began the year fully staffed, there's always movement, particularly in certain positions, they don't necessarily operate on the school year in the same way things like a payroll manager, some of our custodial staff and so on, do fluctuate over the course of the year. And so Mary Ann provided a full update of all hires made since the last hiring update. Happy to answer any questions about it.
Matt? Can I just ask a quick question? So am I reading correctly that at this point, there's just a total of two paraeducators that we need to hire? And I'm calling that out because it's significantly lower than it was.
It is very much so. We are benefiting from the fact that new college grads have had more of a challenge getting jobs, so we have had more robust applicant pools. And so very grateful, and our recruiting efforts, Mary Ann has done hiring fairs. I do think our social media presence helps. So I would say that for paraeducators, we have a very robust pool of applicants. And one thing I will note about paraeducators is we do sometimes have mid-year movement as a paraeducator might assume a teacher role, and that will create a vacancy mid-year. So we do anticipate throughout the year, on occasion, we will see movement in the para-world, but much better than last year and certainly over the past few years, we have had greater applicants, so. Thanks for noting that.
For the short-term roles to be filled, are some of those roles that would be filled by current employees, as like the after-school tutors or the director?
It depends, yeah, so it depends. So the short-term positions for leaves are some of the most challenging to fill, so they might be filled by a retiree. If we have retirees interested in coming back, sometimes someone new to the profession, someone returning to the profession after being home with children, for example. So the candidates we get for some of those short-term educator positions, those are a few of the more common applicants that we receive, but they-
I didn't know if those could be filled by working concurrently, bringing a teacher and an after-school tutor, as like a second gig.
Yeah, so we have a variety of ways that we can fill them, and so we do sometimes need to get creative with those short-term positions. But we have leveraged our networks and do everything we can to get a certified educator for those short-term. for those short-term positions.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting that together.
Yes.
All right, we've already done 7.7, so we will move on to 7.8, which is to review the 2025 proposed MAS C resolutions.
Do you want to do all of these tonight, or do you want to do half?
Do I want to do all of these?
Do we have another meeting before?
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
So yes, conference?
No, I don't.
Do it all tonight. There's usually four of them or something.
Yeah, let's break them up.
Yep.
Yeah. I did realize that our next meeting, apologies to every educator in the room, but our next meeting is the day before, the night before Veterans Day holiday. We'll be meeting on Monday, and the holiday is on Tuesday, so.
Could we go late that night?
I was going to say the exact opposite. But I like the way you think. Anyway, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, so these are, the whole purpose of these is to provide MAS C, it's the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, with some guidance, because they do quite a bit of advocating at the State House, and they want to find out where the members stand. So I just wanted to point out that they're not, none of these are binding on us. We can, no matter how we vote on it, we don't have to do anything about it, but it's just to provide information. So we'll go, or I'll go representing our committee to the delegate assembly during the conference, and it's like one giant school committee meeting, you discuss the resolutions and then vote on them. So tonight, there's only one new resolution, which is different than past years, and then six previously approved resolutions that are up for reauthorization. The resolutions expire after three years if they're not reauthorized. They just kept piling up for a while, so they changed the bio in 2023. So anyway, the first one is from, let's see, this is from the Grafton School Committee, and it's to remove BMI testing from schools. I'll just read the therefore be resolved, that MAS C urges the removal of the BMI screening requirement from all public schools, and be it further resolved that MAS C urges express banning of BMI screening in all public schools. This was, BMI is based on a study of adult white men in 1832, and it doesn't account for any racial or ethnic differences in body types. It also doesn't account for developmental shifts as kids go through puberty. Their argument is that schools are not the appropriate place to manage health conditions, and that might lead to an increased BMI, and that should be done at the doctor's office, and then students go visit, they're required to have physicals every three or four years anyway. They also had concerns about body image and eating disorders, and I guess they cite some studies that show that BMI testing hasn't been shown to improve BMI.
I actually asked our school nurse about this.
Oh, did you?
I did, I did my research. And I wonder if we can split these two, because I think the first one makes sense, that required then screening BMIs, but I don't think it really applies to Hingham as much, but a lot of school districts where students are more likely to use the school nurse as sort of primary healthcare, even though they do need to get physicals. BMI testing does offer sort of a backdoor to begin to be able to treat eating disorders with kids. And so she was concerned about that. I don't know if that's-
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
To say that certainly it shouldn't be a required screening for everybody, but leave that door open, that if they want to use it as a tool to kind of begin to talk about eating disorders.
That makes sense. Have we asked the Hingham nursing staff?
No, I talked to my school nurse in my school, sorry.
You want it to be-
To support the first therefore be resolved, to urge the removal of the BMI screening requirement from all public schools, but not to ban it.
But you would still want them to send the letters home?
To send the, I think the letters go home because it's a universally requirement.
Isn't that getting rid of this?
No, it just says that they can use BMI screening if the school itself determines.
Yeah, so it lifts the requirement that the school screen for BMI, but they go further and say that they ban schools from-
You can't do it even if the school district itself decides.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't feel strongly about it. That was just the feedback that I got from someone, the one person I talked to about it.
I mean, ideally, it would be under the advisement of their doctor, their pediatrician.
Right. Not all students have primary care physicians.
Yeah.
People can go to the CVS Minute Clinic and get a physical for schools without having a primary care doctor.
And it's harder to get a primary care doctor nowadays.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I'd agree with, I'd like it to be removed as a requirement.
Right.
If schools want to do it, leave it to the schools if they, I think it's appropriate.
Go ahead.
Sure. You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion. Exactly. I will make a motion to approve the Hingham School Committee's support of Resolution Number One, Item One, to urge the removal of the BMI screening requirement from all public schools, but we do not support the express banning of BMI screening.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Okay, and then the reauthorizations. This first one was originally, is regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. This one, there was a law passed in July 2022 that does this, so I'm not sure that we need this one still.
Okay.
But we could support it anyway, just in principle.
I'd like to support in principle.
Okay, so I'll read it. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Great and General Court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws to ensure such children and their families have the power of enjoying in safety and tranquility, their natural rights, and the blessings of life as guaranteed by the Constitution of the Commonwealth. Does anyone have feelings about this? I agree, I'd like to support it.
Seems a little provocative to call it sanctuary, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we have the laws protecting it, but I don't think it's a bad thing to put our support for states or Commonwealths that don't offer such protections.
The more cover you can give to school districts for doing the right thing in this environment, the better.
Agreed.
All right, motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to, for the Hingham School Committee to support Resolution Regarding Sanctuary Laws for Transgender Students.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Okay, this third one is increasing the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. As you all know, Hingham has one, and it's to mitigate unanticipated unbudgeted special education expenses that are not predictable to come up in the middle of the year. The current language of the law caps the reserve funds at 2% of the district's net spending, and this resolution proposes increasing it to 5%. The argument is that 2% may not be enough to pay for one tuition in small districts, and that large districts might have multiple unanticipated and unbudgeted special education costs in the middle of the year. And the goal was putting 5%, or moving it to 5% was to allow the reserves to grow at a more sustainable level. So this bill is, this has made some progress. It's up for a third reading in the House, and it's, I think MAS C is looking to continue the advocacy with this.
Any discussion?
I'm in favor of this.
Yeah. I think just to clarify that it's not saying school districts have to increase their spending by 5%, but it is, or the reserve, but it is an option.
Right.
2% is not feasible more.
Right, and again, we're not committing to anything. There's just to advocate.
I'll make a motion to, for the Hingham School Committee to support the resolution for increasing the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion pass. Next one?
Okay, this is membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is a board that oversees education in Massachusetts, and their responsibilities include approving learning standards, voting on charter school applications, deciding when to intervene in the state's lowest performing districts, and hiring the Commissioner of Education. And right now, practicing educators and school committee members are prohibited from serving on the board under the law. There, one thing that's jumped out to me is that the teaching profession is the only profession or trade where the holders of a license are prohibited from serving on its governing board. And I think they were also saying that school committee members may have some knowledge with public school governance and could have a valuable contribution. So the goal is to enact legislation that would repeal the current language prohibiting participation, and also to enact new legislation that would allow educators and school committee members to participate. So there's currently legislation under consideration in the Joint Education Committee, and it's sponsored by, they're bills sponsored by a member of the House and a member of the Senate.
Any discussion?
Nope. I'll make a motion for the Hingham School Committee to support Resolution for the Membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along.
Want to do more?
Let's just keep going.
Okay, okay. How many we get there?
A little short. Okay, so next is preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, exercises power to take over districts in Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge, under the rationale that they were low-performing districts and that local governance wasn't working. So they still have school committees, but the substantive decisions are made by a state-appointed receivers. Their argument is, under the receivership, the districts have failed to meet all of its stated goals. DESI has no plan or timeline to return these districts to local governance. They note that Holyoke was removed from receivership in 2025, but this would call for a plan to return Lawrence and Southbridge to local governance and to enact legislation that would limit state takeovers to no more than three years. So this is currently being considered in the Joint Committee on Rules and the House Committee on Rules.
Any discussion?
I don't really know how I feel about this. I mean, if somebody knows more about the issue than I do, has an opinion, I'd love to hear it, but-
Could we put over voting on this one?
Sure. Sure.
Hold that one.
I just feel like I don't really understand-
And then the last one is a regional one.
Well, there's the personal financial.
Literacy.
Literacy. This is Senator O'Connor's bill, so we should talk about it.
No, I didn't see that one.
I think on this bill, too, I feel like the one, yeah.
I just, I was going to say that we don't always vote on the regional ones.
Right, yeah.
Because we don't, we're not a regional one, so.
Do we have to talk about the other one first, though?
We're going to hold the-
You want to hold the financial literacy?
Hold the finance, hold the-
Local governance.
Local governance one.
Yep.
The receivership one.
Yep.
And then all that's left is the-
Financial literacy.
Financial literacy.
Yep. So that is, it prioritizes financial literacy by ensuring that students are exposed to personal financial literacy curricula. It would mandate, or it advocates to mandate financial literacy curricula at various levels in public schools. It had, this had a hearing, there's legislation that had a hearing in the Senate where Senator O'Connor is sponsoring it, and it also had a hearing in the House with Treasury Secretary Deb Goldberg.
Would this entail the creation of standards, the way?
Yeah, so it is a bit of an unfunded mandate in that, you know, we would need to purchase curriculum, and as Andy explained today, in terms of where it would live in the curriculum, we're already somewhat squeezed on standards, so I do, I think it's a very worthy goal. I have personally some questions around what bucket of time we'll allocate to this. Again, unfunded mandate in terms of curriculum resources, and it's unclear whether this would live in math, in social studies, in a potential kind of business class of some sort. So again, personal literacy, personal financial literacy, absolutely a worthy goal, but I do have some questions about some of those pieces.
Yeah. So one option that we have is to, actually on both of these, we can pause on both of these, do a little research, and discuss them again at our next meeting. Or we can vote either way on both of them, to no action.
No action, yeah.
Or no action one.
Yeah.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
So, yeah. What would people like to do?
I'd like to hold on both.
Hold on both, discuss them again.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Is there ever an agreement to hold on both?
That works.
Yeah, I might go no action on this one, but we can hold and talk, we can no action at next time.
I kind of want to take a look at that bill that is being considered, see what's in it.
Okay. Well, all right, so we'll talk about them both.
Okay.
On November 10th.
Yep. And then the regional school one, are we not? So the regional one-
Regional one, usually.
So this is just to create, it allows districts to establish a reserve fund similar to the Special Education Reserve Fund. Their assessments can fluctuate greatly over time, depending on enrollment and like property values and things like that, so it's trying to ride some stabilization for that. So this is up for a third reading in the Senate. So, I don't know, we could, we're not a regional district, so we could do no action. It's kind of nice to support other committees, because we all have been for supporting it. It's not-
Yeah.
Doesn't impact us, but it helps us.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine supporting it.
I'm supporting it. Yeah, I am, too. Silver Lake, we know people there.
We do.
Good people come from Silver Lake. Some good people come from Silver Lake.
People graduated from Silver Lake.
And some good people came here from Silver Lake. You know what? I say let's support Silver Lake. All right, I'll make a motion for the Hingham School Committee to support the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, okay. Till next time.
Sounds good.
All right, moving on to 7.9, to approve grants and donations.
None.
None. Surplus?
None.
Subcommittee on Project Reports. Matt?
Yeah, real quick, so we did have our finance subcommittee meeting last Friday, where we spent the majority of the time having conversations with the two candidates we approved tonight. We also got an update on the Q1 budget, sort of where we stood after Q1. And Foster had their school council meeting last week, it was actually on the day that Principal Shafley announced his retirement, so we spent the first minutes, I don't know, like collectively congratulating, and we also walked through the school improvement plan that he'll come and present, I think, next time.
Tim?
HRSC met and Snapboard met, but nothing really to report.
Salary negotiations met with Unit E last Tuesday, and we'll be meeting with them again tomorrow. And we'll also have a meeting on Wednesday to plan to start negotiations with the Bus and Van Drivers Association. Hingham Middle School Council met last Monday, the next meeting's November 24th, and the Hingham Education Foundation, their next meeting is November 4th.
Policy is meeting on Wednesday, and Climate Action had a meeting last week, and they were very excited and supportive about the groundbreaking for the new electric buses, charging stations, and also they shared the news about Foster coming online with the solar panels, and they were quite happy with that, too, so they sent their appreciation.
Terrific. High School Council meets Wednesday at 3 o'clock, so I will be there. And then the Student Advisory Council is Thursday, actually at 7:00. So I think Jen and I are going to do that one, it's a Zoom meeting. And that's it.
Perfect. So Sustainable Budget Task Force met last Thursday, started going over the datasets, and we are meeting every two weeks at this point, and there are warrants in your pocket. I'm looking at you as if you have something to say.
Nope, I do not.
You do not. All right. Our next school committee meeting is November 10th, and then we have Monday, November 24th. Believe it or not, that is still before Thanksgiving. Item 10 is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
I will make a- I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held October 6, 2025, and to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and to act as appropriate if the chair so declares.
As so declare? All those in favor? By rule call vote. John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim? Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We adjourned, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.